Mr. Capuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Riordan?
Here.
Mr. D'Amelio? Mr. Fuhrer Demondow?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Gooman?
Here.
Mr. Pointon?
Here.
First on tonight's item is preliminary final land development plan for 1400 Lawrence Road. This is the Linwood Elementary School, and it's the school district in Howardford Township. Please give us your name and your... And where you...
My name is Lynn Blausch. I'm with CB Development. We represent the... have represented the school district on a lot of their capital projects and are happy to say we're representing them on this one. We're here to propose, um, uh, to... The district's here to propose building a new elementary school to replace the existing Linwood. Intent, uh, they, and looked at renovating and decided it would be a best approach to build new. And we had that opportunity because there's land here right at the site. So tonight, we're here to, um, the professionals, it's Ryan Orr from KCBA, and Tom Gil... Tom Hannah from Gilmore Associates will go through some of the technical aspects. But we just want to say that, that essentially, the existing school body will just move into the new school once it's, um, built. And, uh, it will function very similar to the current use.
All right. Do you have a copy of Township Engineers?
We do. We do.
And if you could go through this with us, please?
Um, good evening. My name's Tom Hannah. I'm at Gilmore and Associates. If you'd like, I can walk through the site plan if you, if your interest, and Ryan can say a few words about the building.
Yeah, if anybody... That'd be good.
Sure. Um, so for those of you that were at the sketch plan presentation back in the spring, the plan that we've submitted is very similar to that, to that plan. As Lynn had said, the, the school building will be constructed, um, on the existing playfield, the existing soccer field that's out along Lawrence Road while the existing school is still in session, functioning. The curb cuts out on Lawrence Road are to remain as intact. We're going to use the same driveway entrances, entrance and exit. And the bus lane, where the buses currently park and pull off along Lawrence Road, will also remain the same. So in terms of the movements in and out of the site, that will remain similar to what's, what's currently functioning there. As you come in off of the site, we've, we've provided, um, 131 parking spaces. Current site has, just as referenced, current site has 108. So we're required to provide 120. We have 11 extra parking spaces above ordinance requirements. Also, the parking down along the southern property line, which is existing today, will remain along that, along that southern property line. So how the, the site will function on a day-to-day basis, again, buses will load and unload along Lawrence Road as they do now. Parent drop-off will, will occur in front of the school. So parents will come in off of Lawrence Road and take the first immediate right and, and queue up along the entrance, um, in front of the building. The queuing capacity in there will, will basically double what the, the school has now. In our surveys out at the school, they have queuing capacity for about 10 cars on most days. That's sufficient. The queuing capacity here is up around 20 cars. We have close to 500 feet, um, from all the way around the drop-off zone.
You're, but you're dropping off with the buses in front, on the side there?
Yes.
Is that intended?
This is now, yes. There's a pull-off.
It is intended for the buses?
Yes. Yeah. And it is, it's that way right now.
It's still saying its name?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. We're not changing any of the road, road improvements out along here. Supplemental parking here, majority of parking here, probably teacher parking over in this area as well. The playfield, that's, that's currently where the school will be built, will be replicated where the existing school is now. Once the new school's built, the old school will be demolished, and the playfield will be constructed there. So we'll get a soccer field back from the one that we've lost. Services will occur down here at a lower level from this access road down to the site. We've met with the fire marshal and talked to him about certain concerns. We added this extension here, paved fire access so that they can get their ladder truck back to the classroom wing here and have access to the rooftop that way. We've also added a couple, added a fire hydrant at the end of Warren Avenue at their request and a couple of the features that they, they were looking for. Stormwater will occur in a basin around here, as well as several rain gardens up in the parking area. We also have an underground infiltration bed that will be under the, the hardscape play area back here. Ryan, would you like to talk?
Question. Where's the grade change then accommodated? Because it drops off matter.
Sure, sure. So the existing parking lot here, or the proposed parking lot here will be roughly at the same elevation that the existing parking lot is. You'll enter the building at the, um, second floor elevation, basically. This will be the classroom wing, so you'll enter at the second floor of the classroom wing. There'll be a lower level and then an upper level. This will be a three-story classroom wing here. And Ryan can give you a little bit more detail on this area. This is essentially where the big group areas, the gymnasium, cafeteria, office space, nurse's office, things like that will occur. But you'll come in off of, into the second, uh, second floor elevation here. So as you, we will then be transitioning down the, the grade from existing grade here along this back drive aisle. It'll transition down in a step fashion. There'll be some grading right off the back of the sidewalk here, transition down to the flat soccer field, and then transition down again to the, to the service area back here.
Out of curiosity, what's the, what's the dimension from street to the soccer field?
From the street here?
The driveway.
The driveway.
At the bottom of the drilling.
Right here?
Next one down.
Next one down, right there.
This area here. Let me just...
The dash line to the field is 15 feet.
Back of the sidewalk, it's 32 feet, but there's a transition slope in that, in that area.
What, what is the grade level of the street and the grade level of the soccer field?
The grade level of the street is, um, uh, there's a...
Approximately?
There's about a five-foot difference between the sidewalk elevation here and the, and the soccer field here. And this'll then slope in this direction. So on average, there'll be about a five-foot, five to six-foot difference between this sidewalk elevation and, say, the center of the field.
Is another five feet down to the school?
Yes, right.
But about halfway.
Right. You can see in... I can pull out the grading plan if you'd like. I mean, we can, we could look at that, yeah.
At the last meeting, and maybe if you brought up the, the aerial plan that's of the existing conditions below, we talked about the awkwardness of the, you know, the township's property next to it and the, how it bisects the softball field. You guys worked that out? That that's going to be addressed?
We're looking into possibly relocating this, yeah, because this, this baseball field here will be lost in the grading with the...
Oh, okay, so it's not just the property line, it's also a grading? Okay.
Well, this is the property line.
Right.
Our grading plan doesn't extend beyond that, but this area of the, of the baseball field will be compromised with the construction. So, um, the, and I don't want to speak for CB, but I think there's been some discussions about how to move that, that ball field and replicate that.
We're actually meeting with, um, the township on Tuesday morning, November 2nd, to talk about that field and maybe reconstructing it on their property.
Fully onto the township's property? Okay, understood.
It would make more sense.
Yeah, right.
We would do it as part of the initial phase, that it would be done early.
Right, okay.
Excuse me, when you meet with the township, would you bring up the subject of using part of their ground for a staging area?
We were, we were.
There's still a playfield, the one that exists now, is that being relocated within the design?
The existing soccer field?
Uh, soccer field, but the jungle gym set, uh...
Oh, this here?
Playfield.
Yes, yes. That'll, that'll occur in this area back between the two wings. This is a hardscape play area. The cafeteria is right in here, so there'll be access, you know, for recess and whatnot during, during the lunch periods out onto the hardscape here. And then these will be mulch play areas with playground equipment.
You have a copy of the township engineer's letter?
Uh, we do, yeah.
If you could go through that with us?
Sure, we will. So the first comment's a zoning comment about open space. I, before everyone came, I, I handed out a, um, a little exhibit, an open space exhibit. How is that? You have, we have a, you can put up there. Show, um, and, and we'll make note of this on the plan, but just to show that we, we have area to satisfy the 30% requirement for the open space.
Good.
Comment two is about potentially enhancing the buffer requirements along the southern property line. Our landscape plan does show plannings compliant with the buffer requirements. I've talked to the township engineer and suggested that, you know, if, if we go for site walk and they recognize some gap in here that we need to fill in, we can, we can make that adjustment and, and satisfy that condition. Comment three, the plan indicates that, discussing steep slopes. We have made application to the zoning hearing board for relief from the steep slope variance. We will be, uh, exceeding the allowable disturbance of steep slopes. Now, just keep in mind that the steep slopes that we're talking about are steep slopes that were constructed when the, when the Linwood was built in the 1950s. So we're talking about areas in here on the transition grading around the school and around Lawrence, Lawrence Road. So we will be seeking a variance from the zoning hearing board next, and we're scheduled to be there next Thursday night. Subdivision land development, comment number four, we're asking for a waiver, some of the zoning requirements to be shown on the plan of the surrounding 2,000 feet of the surrounding property. As well, item five and six, we're asking for waivers of, to show other improvements and infrastructure improvements within 200 and 400 feet of the, of the school property. All of our construction will be on the school property here. We're not, uh, we're not going off-site to gather utilities or any other, other needs. So all the, all the infrastructure we have is, is right here, except for making revised utility connections with PICO and with Aqua PA. Comment number seven deals with showing horizontal site distance. Now, this says for proposed access drives, and I just want to be clear that we're not changing the access drives here, that the, the two access drives, which were permitted by PennDOT several years ago when they did improvements to the, um, to the existing parking lot, will remain. So I can talk to township engineer about that, but whether that's a, an issue we need to address or not. Comment number eight is we'll comply and will provide the proper tree calculation for the replacement trees. Comment number nine is a shade tree commission. We'll obviously attend the shade tree commission at their next meeting if we can schedule that with Kelly. Comment number 10 and 11 are the requirements for curb and sidewalk along the frontage of Lawrence Road. We would be asking for a waiver of those requirements. The sidewalk currently from the eastern property line all the way down past the bus lane to the existing service drive. And then there's the asphalt path that, that then goes down to the township playfields. So all that will remain intact. We're not changing any of that. In fact, we'll repave portions of that asphalt path as it's going to be disturbed with, with the grading for the detention basin. Curbing along Lawrence Road, again, it's curbed in front of the, the existing improvements here. We're not doing any other roadway improvements beyond that at all, so to put curbing in there, it doesn't make sense at this point. There's, that has storm drainage out there now, so we're asking for a waiver of this. Comment number 12 is it will comply to provide concrete monuments at the, uh, the waylines. Item 13, we will absolutely make application to the county conservation district and get their approval. Comment 14, there was some technical comments to address relative to the sanitary sewer connection, which we will, um, which we will comply with. Then we get into stormwater management. I just wanted to make it, I have scheduled a meeting with the township engineer for next week, and we'll be going through the stormwater management comments in detail to address any of the concerns of the, the township engineer. I can go through each of those if you...
Please.
Okay. Comment 15 regarding the above-ground detention basin, township engineer was suggesting that maybe there's some other options that we could look at to potentially shallow the basin or use different measures in here along with potentially fencing that. We're open to those suggestions. The basin that's there now is sized primarily to deal with the rate control. Reducing that, the, this district is a very challenging district from a stormwater perspective because we're in a, we have a very substantial rate control requirement. We have to take our 50-year storm for the post-development condition and reduce it all the way down to the 10-year storm of the pre-development condition. That requirement generates the need for a lot of volume, which our hands are kind of tied with that in that volume requirement, which is really driving the size of the basin that we need. We've looked at infiltration. We have infiltration here to address our groundwater recharge requirements. There is some infiltration capacity up in this area of the basin, and we can talk to township engineer about possibly modifying that, but, um, the overall volume requirement for that basin is likely not going to change very much. But we'll go through that with...
Is there any potential for infiltration or storage in the upper parking lot?
In the upper parking lot here?
Yeah.
Well, we've done some testing in these rain garden areas, which is, it's so-so. It's not, not the best. There's a little bit of volume control that we can get out of these. Right now, the school and the existing, um, the existing driveway are under there, so it's a little bit difficult to test that, but, uh, we're doing, yeah. I think we, we have a good plan for stormwater that will, will work out the issues with the township engineer. Additional information, comment 16 is it will comply. Additional information needs to be provided for some of the rain gardens up in the upper parking area. Comment 17, further details should be provided for modification of the existing infiltration trench. There's an existing stormwater infiltration trench along the existing parking area in here. The, the main infiltration component of that is remaining. We're going to utilize that. It seems to be working fine. There's a couple other supplemental storage pipes attached next to that, which will be compromised as part of the construction, which we're going to rebuild a portion of that. Township engineer was just looking for some more detail on that. The underground infiltration basin, um, uh, there's a, a concern about some cover on here, and we'll, we'll obviously take a look at that and comply. Areas are proposed, that are proposed for infiltration, uh, need to be protected from the compaction, um, from compaction during construction. This, this area here is going to be one of the, the underground infiltration bed is going to be one of the first things that goes in. So we're going to, and we're working with the conservation district on how to secure that during construction. But the idea is to build that, obviously, take precautions for not compacting the, the bottom of that, and then pave that as it, put a base coat of paving down on there so that it can be utilized for staging area during construction. And we've worked out some details to bypass that during sediment stage of construction and seal that off so that we're not introducing any sediment laden water into that, into that facility. This all has to go through the county conservation district, and we've met with Ed McGargy there to kind of work out the scope of this, but our application will be going in shortly for Item 20, some profiles on the plans. We're inconsistent with some of the calculations, which we will address. Item 21, following comments pertain to, um, the above-ground detention basin, and there are some technical comments there, which we will comply with. Item 22, the length of spillway, our spillway on the, on the basin is currently along this, this burn here. I agree with the comment, and, and we're going to look to shift that emergency spillway to the other side over here so that if in the event the emergency spillway is activated, there won't be any direct flow out onto, onto Lawrence Road and accommodate that. Item 23, uh, there was an inconsistency on one of the drawings for our pre-development area, which we will address. Going through the general comments, plan should be reviewed by the township fire code official, which we will obviously do. And I, as I had said before, we had met with the fire, fire officials and walked through some of their, their concerns and added those to the plans. Vehicle circulation at the intersection, I believe right here, is of concern. We can talk to township engineer about that. This will function similar to the way the existing school functions now. So it'll be a one-way drive in and a one-way drive out. Cars that are going into either queue to drop off will come out here and then exit this way. Same with those folks that are parking here. Once you get beyond here, this will be two-way traffic, so cars that are parked here can, can back out and come out, come up here. If there's some signage here that we, we need to add, we're certainly open to do that. We have, you know, do not enter signs and one-way signs and no left turn signs, that type of thing, so, um, we will, we will work out those details. Item 26, it will comply. There was some concern about spot elevations in here and not having water pond at the loading dock area, which we will address. Item 27 has to deal with a pipe cover issue, which we will address. Item 28, unclear why the existing driveway entrance adjacent to the proposed transformer will remain. So right now, there's a service drive, as you know, that comes down in the back of the school. We're going to, um, that, that drive will be demolished as part of the construction, but we'd like to leave that, that portion in there. Both of the, the transformer and the Aqua, um, vault, water vault will be up in that area. It'll provide PICO an opportunity to pull off the road if they need to service that. A lot of times, they want a paved access to the transformer, and that's the reason for, for leaving that there.
Is that a vent dryer or liquid fill?
I'm sorry.
Transformer? What kind of a transformer?
Uh, I'm the civil engineer. I'm not the mechanical engineer, so I don't know. I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering if it's vent dryer or if it's oil. One's totally sealed, the other one isn't.
It's transformer.
If it's vent dryer, you're going to have to put a fence around it.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll comply with whatever PICO requires, obviously, so, but the, the electrical engineer is handling communication with, with PICO. Some of the improvements, okay, item 29, there's some, just some concern with some of the, the improvements, the utility improvements and the crossovers from a temporary connection to the existing school as we're crossing over to the permanent connections with the, with the new school. We've had a lot of discussions about those utility connections and what's going to go in where. And our construction documents that are to go out to bid will have lengthy detailed notes in terms of what the contractor has to do to secure temporary power and utilities to maintain them for the existing school and the conversion over to the new school once, once the new school is complete, that final summer period between, in the transition. And item 30 is a, is a comment. Look at some of the existing, uh, structure out on, out on Lawrence Road, which the district's engineer can address.
I wanted to revisit 10 and 11, the curb and sidewalk. I mean, the township is having everybody replace curbs and sidewalks when they sell their home, and this is probably the only chance that a curb and sidewalk is going to get installed in this site for the next 50 years.
Sure.
So I don't see why a waiver would be, why we should allow a waiver for that.
Well, um, right now, there's, there's public access along Lawrence Road, either on, with, with curb and sidewalk across approximately half the, half the site frontage. And that transition to an asphalt path, which goes down to the, the township. I think there's a path that goes through the township property as well. There's some stairs maybe down in that, in that area. So from a, from a pedestrian access standpoint, I think it's still adequate placing a concrete sidewalk out along the Lawrence Road there from a safety standpoint. I'd rather see the asphalt path maintained up on that, that hill. You know, there's a bit of a grade change from, from Lawrence Road here until you go up that slope up to where the path is now. I'd prefer to see the existing path remain up there rather than bringing sidewalk down at the, at the Lawrence Road elevation.
Could it be replaced as a, as a concrete sidewalk?
Um, it could. I mean, I don't know, you know, asphalt, obviously cheaper to, to install and to maintain, but, you know...
You know the age of it? Is it approximate age of?
Of this?
That walkway, yeah?
Uh, yeah, it's pretty old, right. But we're repaving, you know, the majority of that coming up, up through here, and we're adding a second little spur to get to the back of the school here where, where walkers can, can school as well.
And, and the curbing?
Oh, curbing, you know, curbing comes into a, a drainage, a drainage issue too. So if, again, this is all curbed, the, I'll call it the eastern half of the site is curbed. This portion, as you transition down, down the hill here, is not curbed, but PennDOT still has storm drainage in that, in the roadway there. There's a number of inlets along the frontage there that seem to be adequate. It doesn't seem to be eroding or causing any, any issues. It's existed like that, you know, as far as...
Right. I'm just saying, it's, I mean, when every house gets sold, curbs go in.
I understand.
I mean, this is, I think this is when we should be asking for this to be improved.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't think this site will, will really benefit from having curb out there. It's not, I don't think there's, there's an issue...
Homeowner feels the same way.
Well, if, if there's an existing curb in front of somebody's house that's cracked and deteriorated, I can see where the township, you know...
Even when there's no curbs, they're making people put them in.
Okay.
That's where I'm seeing it.
It's our request, yeah.
I don't know if I'm alone in that, but...
Right. So, um, that's the letter. Do you have any other comments or Ryan could?
I have a general observation.
Hmm?
Just regarding the phasing.
Sure.
Can you explain how this is going to be phased? And my concern is the grading is going to be a bear to deal with. And I'm concerned in that we're going to build a new school, and if you really look at the grading carefully, you're going to see that some major grading or earthwork is going to have to occur for that new school to be built.
Mm-hmm.
And I would suggest that it, it's going to be something that's, has to be looked at very carefully.
Mm-hmm. Well, we've, yeah, we have studied it in great detail.
I mean, you're moving a lot of earth around.
Yeah, yeah, there is a lot of earth to move. But, so, you know, the, I'll just go back to the, to the existing features here. Obviously, this area of the, of the site where the soccer field is now is relatively flat. There's a gentle slope out towards Lawrence Road. Gets a little steeper as you get down in this, in this corner here. The, the lowest level of the building elevation for the first floor, um, and here's a copy of the, yeah, thank you, Ryan. Copy of the, actually, if we go back to that other, it has the, some of the grading on it. Anyway, the, the lower elevation of this, of the school itself is essentially on grade... Anyway, the, the lower elevation of this, of the school itself is essentially on grade right here, okay? There's some fill that'll occur down in, in this area of the classroom wing. And then obviously, you know, the basin itself is going to be graded with the berm there. So, you know, the school is going to be built, and with the, the earth coming out of here and out of here, we can essentially build that, building pad at grade without, I mean, it's going to be a lot of disturbance down here, obviously.
My, my concern is where the, the existing school and the new school.
Right.
Are going to be close to each other.
Right. So this is, so one of the exhibits we had during, that we brought to the sketch plan was this. This red line is a 30-foot offset from the existing school and represents the closest that, that the new school will be to the existing school. So there's going to be an area in here, actually, do you want to, do you want to talk about that?
Sure.
Okay. Ryan can maybe give you a little bit better insight on that.
So the, the existing.
Up to the microphone, so you can hear it.
Sure, sure. So the, the new school will be built on that, that 30-foot buffer, with the lowest level being on that building pad that Tom is speaking of. So when it is built, the existing lower floor will be exposed.
See it.
To, to the air. And then in the future phases, when Tom is speaking about the, the field, the soccer field, that being lowered, five feet lower, we're taking the fill from that backfilling against the building for that, around that lower level.
Here.
To bring grade up to the second floor.
Got it. Thank you.
So a lot of the, the earth that's coming out of here, I mean, the, the building is here now, the building demolition will go away, and then this, this elevation will be cut.
Got it.
That, the majority of that earth is going to go.
Up against the new building. Thank you.
Discuss in a little detail how it will be built in terms of safety measures while school is going on, you know, what, what is the plan to?
Sure. So we maintain two halves of the site, essentially. So it would be construction fencing to keep the, we'll say, the north side of the site, keep contractors' construction equipment on that side, with construction fencing along the existing building. We need to maintain fire egress, so there will be pathways out of construction fencing to maintain those exits from the lower level. And then we're also maintaining the service drive entrance to double as the construction entrance off of.
He'll fence the whole site?
Yes.
Yeah, so there'll be fencing around the whole perimeter.
Staging will be probably on the public, on the township land?
Well, we're going to stage as much as we can, you know, again, in here. And then, as I'd said before, we're, you know, the area, this area in here will be a staging area as well. We're going to, you know, put down the base paving on top of, on top of that stormwater for laydown.
Can you tell me how far it is from the field to the actual new building?
From the?
Edge of the field to the building?
From here?
Yeah.
Fifty, 50 feet from the actual edge of the playing surface, we have a 15-foot safety runout.
So from that 15-foot, it drops down to a swale?
Yes. There's a, there's a swale that'll, that'll come down here and end up at the low point down here. So if you can, the, this soccer field here will be terraced off of the parking and then terraced it down to, to the lower level.
So you assume the spectators will be sitting along the state, you know, that side there and?
Yeah, correct.
Not, not really much opportunity on the other side, right?
But this area here is, you know, will have ADA access off of the parking area here. This is relatively gentle grade in, in here as well.
Yeah, it seems very flat longitudinally, from side to side. There's either like a spectator stadium seating on one side and a drop-off on the other.
Right, right.
Thank, thank you for adding that path. I think we talked about that a little bit at the, yeah, that's, I think that's good.
There's a couple other sidewalk improvements that we're, we're still working out the details for, like, you know, down around here, and it's still kind of little, little things to add.
Staying on the field, it's something I've always had a bit of a bugaboo, and I, I believe this is a school district policy, but outdoor restrooms for playing fields, I think it's across the board, they, they don't have them. And has that, did that come up at all as a possible, possibility for this?
I can't speak to that issue, I don't know.
We, we don't have outdoor toilet rooms, but we do have within the building, which, which we don't have here tonight, the way that it's designed is very similar to Manoa and Chestnut Waltz, where the common wing is accessible to the community.
Right.
So we have the cafeteria and the gym, and there's a gang bathroom right there, so that we, if we lock off the classroom wing for security reasons at night, the public still has access to a bathroom.
On the weekends?
On the weekends.
Okay.
And after hours.
Okay.
But no, there's no outside toilet room for the public's use.
Right, and I, yeah, I feel like, I mean, just as a soccer dad, it's, it's been a, it's been a major frustration, and I've heard it from, I mean, I've been to every local school field around than an hour drive, and they almost all seem to have them. And when parents come in from other, they expect to have a restroom or, you know, access to a restroom. And it's, it is an issue, and I, I'd love if the school district could think about it going forward. And I know nobody wants to look at a porta-pot, but it is some, a concern, so putting that out there.
I have one concern about the location of that, that playground area. You said it's sort of in that V shape, pushed back?
Right.
Yeah, whether that could be pushed to the left enough that it wouldn't be sort of buried in that sort of hidden V shape away from sightlines.
Mm-hmm. So part of, part of that is twofold. One, security of the school during the day, during the school day. It's actually easier, more easily supervised in that.
Inside the end, right.
And then, at the same time, again, it's up to the school board's policy, but if there is a soccer game and the playground is open, you are able to look across the service drive, across that.
I'm more concerned like off-hours, when there's no one there, because it's already buried 15, 16 feet down in that hole.
Right. Well, it, it'll be fenced entirely around.
Inside that courtyard? Okay, good.
Actually, pretty similar to Chestnut Waltz, Parte, right, yeah, which I think works pretty well.
I have a general question, just as a clar. You mentioned that the above-ground detention basin, that area that's, that's right, the area that is below the playground?
Here.
A little bit lower? It's a square right near the entrance, down lower, right, a little bit lower, right there.
Oh, the, the underground.
Right. You mentioned that that's going to be the staging area?
Well, in order to, there's going to be construction staging in this, in this area right in here.
I thought, I thought you had mentioned that you were going to build that first.
Yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't that affect that area as a staging area?
Well, this is all going to be essentially at the same grade as the, as the building pad. Finished grade here on the, will be, will be close to the finished grade of the, of the.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm thinking of it as a staging area, construction staging area on top of the detention basin?
Well, so there, this detent, this underground detention basin is a, is subsurface.
I understand.
It's a series of pipes and stone bed.
I understand.
And then there will, the, the final surface of this will be an asphalt, asphalt surface for the, for the outdoor play, but.
I'm brainstorming about weight of materials being put on top of that, that's all.
Okay. I mean, we've built plenty of these systems under, under parking ground, under parking lots. I mean, most of the time when we build these, they're under paved parking areas or entrance drives or driveways that see a lot of traffic.
Because I've, I've seen them built above playground areas, but not necessarily using it as a staging area, that's all.
Right. I mean, we're talking about maybe material laydown, you know, in there, so.
Weight, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll look at the number 28. Pico, if you put a fence around, you're going to have to put a fence around that transformer.
Okay.
There's too much power in them things. Kids can get killed. Pico puts a, their lock on it, so they're the only ones that can get into it.
Okay.
I mean, this is, I've, I've worked with Pico before. In fact, I, I think I still even have a key. It's the same key that they use.
Universal key.
It is. It's kind of a universal key from Pico.
Right.
In fact, they gave me one at one time, because I used to call them Pico.
Yeah, there's a fence around the one at Chestnut Waltz out in the.
But you do need a fence.
We'll, we'll coordinate that with the, with the electrical engineer from Snyder Hall.
You're going to have to need a fence around there.
Right, okay.
Anybody else have anything else? No, I, I was just asking, you know, Angelo, I know, has some questions for you.
Sure.
You, you have plans, utility plan stage one, you have an ENS control plan stage one, assuming stage one is construction of new buildings, stage two is the demolition of the existing, more or less.
Right, like final, yeah.
It would seem to me that you, you would also need staging plans for demolition and for utilities?
Uh.
And anything, and grading, anything else where you're, you're doing different work in different stages?
Right.
I mean, for me, your demolition plan shows everything being demolished.
Right.
But there's nothing to indicate what comes out first.
Okay.
Whereas your, your utility plan has things that have to be done in stage one, and the rest of it happens in stage two, I would assume.
Right.
I, I think from a construction standpoint, it'd be helpful if you had plans for both stages, not just some plans for stage one.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Like an interim grading plan or a?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, good. What, what's the district's policy on, on the use of the, general public use of the ball fields and playground areas?
During daylight hours, right?
I mean, if, if someone in the neighborhood wants to come out and swing on the swings, it's okay. No, I understand, but weekends and after-school?
I think, yeah, there's signs posted till dusk, I believe, or, right.
And, and the athletic field itself, there's, if someone wants to use that, do they need to get a permit from you guys? Okay, and you did say before that's a grass field, correct?
Correct, correct.
The, the detention basin, and in comparing the, the grading of the detention basin as a sediment basin versus the grading as a permanent basin, there's some additional earthwork that's required in the basin.
Right.
And I assume that's not going to be done until basically the site's stabilized?
Yeah, as, as they convert the sediment basin into the permanent detention basin.
So how, how are you going to deal with the, with the earthwork that's created by that construction? You know, the.
Final.
Sediment basin doesn't show an emergency spillway. The permanent basin shows an emergency spillway that's 1.3 feet lower than the top of berm. So there's 163 by 1.3 feet of material that's going to come out.
Right.
Plus the grading on the bottom of the basin is, requires excavation compared to it being a sediment trap.
Actually, we're, we're filling some of the sediment basin. The volume of the sediment basin is greater than the, the permanent volume of the, of the detention basin. So there's going to be some fill condition in there, yeah.
So you're filling the sediment basin in?
There's going to be a little bit of fill in this, as it's designed now, in this upper corner. We had to pull back some of the grades in here to get some additional volume for the sediment, for the sediment basin, right?
Would you take a look at those two grading plans, just to make sure that you're not creating a situation at the very end where you got a ton, you know, a ton of material to chuck offsite, because you basically stabilized the site?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the fire access, fire equipment access?
Sure.
The plans call for a new gate at the, is it Virginia Avenue entrance?
Right, there's a gate there now, and we either reuse that existing gate or, or put in a new, a new gate.
Okay, because the drawings call for a new gate.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, is that something that has to be coordinated with the fire departments as far as having a way to open that gate if it's a, a knock box or something like that?
Right, right.
And then there's also another, there are bollards, I think, at the other fire entrance. Is that something that they can just run over?
Well, they'd be collapsible bollards.
Okay, all right, so that, that's a detail that you would have to.
Yeah.
Since we're talking about details, will your construction drawings have a detail for the water meter pit?
Yes, we're, we're working.
Proposing to put your fire department connection at the meter pit, correct?
Yes.
And that's something?
At request of the fire.
Fire marshal, good, 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 okay.
Similar to what you have out, out front here on Manoa.
Okay. My, my primary concern about the project is, is, oh, let me just go back to a couple more things. You mentioned that the underground infiltration basin is going to be constructed first. And there's, and then, once that's built, then you're going to use the area above it as staging area. But there's a significant amount of lawn area that drains into that, which is going to be disturbed area during construction. So it's going to be imperative that whatever inlets feed that underground basin are fully protected.
We're not going to connect. Well, we're not connecting, we're purposely not connecting the inlets. You know, any of the drainage that's proposed up in this field up here will not be connected to that underground basin until this is all. We actually have a bypass pipe from this low point here around to the sediment basin.
So you're going to use that bypass pipe?
Yeah.
Okay. But, but the, the lawn area between the, in the V?
Right.
There's drainage in there that, that comes into the basin?
Well, this is, this is primarily going to be mulch, mulch play area as well. So this, there's not, there's, there's really not going to be a whole lot of lawn in there, but I, I understand your.
During construction, it's not going to be mulch?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But that won't, again, that won't be, the inlets that are in here will not be connected to the underground until, until that's stabilized.
Okay. The loading area, are there like roll-up doors there, garage doors that are in that loading area to the building?
So there's a, a loading dock, and then on top of the loading dock, there are roll-up doors and a man-sized door. That's at a.
All right, so explain to me, the, the finished grade outside the door is the same grade as the basement floor?
So in that end of the building, the building's actually stepped two feet off.
It is?
Yes, it was raised two feet.
Okay, all right, so if that inlet number 16, which is just to the left of the loading dock, that were somehow to get clogged for any reason, you wouldn't have a problem with water draining into the building?
Yeah, this will, this is going to be designed to drain out towards that, that low point here, and that's Ryan's.
I would say, if that low point gets clogged, and the water builds up in that area, it's not going to back up into the building?
No, no.
Okay. Yeah, and, and generally, I think it's going to be difficult to, to get materials around this building into your, your staging area. I assume that your staging areas are going to include trailers, contractor trailers?
Mm-hmm.
And you're, you're required to have five contracts, correct? Or four?
Five.
Five, right. So there's a good chance each contractor is going to want to have his own trailer?
It's a chance.
Okay. And, and negotiating that, that 15-foot wide access driveway around the corner of that building is going to be a little difficult for some of the larger materials that are coming to the site?
Right.
Okay.
That's what, yeah. So this, this may, you know, we may need to put this in to get materials down to this, to this point as a, as a, as an access drive.
So then the materials are coming in your main driveway?
Uh, yeah, they would be, yeah, just to get your, you know.
Okay, you, you kind of indicated that the access would be from the existing driveway, yeah?
Yeah, main access would be from there.
Right. Where will all the contractor employees park?
I think the neighbors would love to know about that.
Hopefully, hopefully, they're not going to park on any of those residential streets to the south of the project, right?
No. Currently, during the school day, the school actually. Currently, during the school day, the school actually staffs, stacks a lot of their faculty in that, the back parking lot along those classroom wings, which leaves this front parking lot mostly unused during the day. So one thought is, well, you would essentially give contractors part of that back parking area, have faculty park closer to the front.
And that won't impact your parent drop-off and pickup?
Parent drop-off right now occurs right here, and they outlet at this awning area right here. Then they exit, exit out that way.
Okay, so I guess, bottom line is, I believe the township would prefer that those residential streets to the south not be used for contractor parking?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you fence off that parking area for the contractors?
As contractors.
Right.
And your hours of construction, I assume, would be somewhere like 7:00 to 3:30, somewhere in that range?
Yes.
Okay.
The goal would be to get them in ahead of...
You mean, not your goal, but you will get them out of there before? I mean, what time's school let out?
3:30.
3:30, so the contractors you're hoping are out of there before 3:30 or after 3:30?
Well, we would mandate one way.
Okay, and I assume in your phasing plans, that you're gonna list each item that has to be done within each individual phase, and that there will be a milestone required to be met as far as a date for completion of those?
Correct.
Items in that phase? One other thing, when the township engineer says he it is prudent to consider something, I think he's being kind with his words there?
He wants you to.
Prudent means, you know, it's a good idea to do it, all right?
I don't think he would've written the comment.
Thank you.
From a, I don't know, maybe this is more of a school district policy, but will background checks be required for all contractors working on the site, since they will be on... Okay, I think that's another thing that parents would really wanna know and feel better about. Brian, can you fill us in a little bit more about the architecture of the project? I'm sure that's what you would rather be talking about.
So, expand on what Tom was speaking about. The plan remains very similar to what we presented for the sketch plan. That commons area towards the bottom with the main admin area, one grade at that point at the upper level. So when you enter the building, you're entering on the second floor through administration. Then, as you make your way back to the classroom wing, that's, again, a three-story classroom wing, two grades on each floor, with stairwells that service down to the lower level or up to the third floor. Going down to the lower level and back into the commons area is where your gymnasium on the lower level with stage and cafeteria are located.
Do you have the slideshow that you presented to the school board handy to put up?
I don't, I don't, right here.
It has some good renderings that I think would be good to see.
Sure, we can, I actually, I have, I have the exterior. That's what you're speaking of. So this was presented at last school board meeting, the main entry. So we're trying to keep in mind the surrounding community. There's a lot of brick, a lot of brick, so we're maintaining that throughout the project along the classroom wing, along Lawrence Road, as well as right at the front entry, as well as some accent pieces with metal panel, et cetera.
Is it the same metal as the Minowa school, or similar?
It's a similar type product, not the exact same product.
I'm assuming that there is going to be some sort of access into your three-story building for handicapped people and for kids who get injured and that sort of thing?
Absolutely, we have an elevator located in the two meeting points of the classroom wing and the commons wing, so there would be access not only during school hours, but if there are after-hours events, the elevator would be available in that situation as well.
Figure that was pretty standard, is it?
Yes, absolutely, base design.
Is it all brick cavity wall on stud backup?
It's a brick cavity wall and metal studs.
Full three and five eights?
Yes.
Four inch nominal brick?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a thin veneer.
Okay.
Just one quick comment on the site. Have you guys investigated a method of permanently separating the construction traffic from the school traffic? So that even when workers are leaving, they're not driving through the parking lot where students might be? I don't think we've shown that yet, that I think it's prudent to keep them separated throughout the whole construction.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they can figure out a way to do that.
Any other questions?
I'm done.
Can we open it to public?
That's all open, I don't have to... Chuck, do you have anything?
I don't have anything further.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask anybody in the audience on this side here, if they have any questions, I'd like to ask at this present time. And if you do, stand, give us your name, your address.
Hey, Dave Zeminski, I'm at 1463 Lawrence Road. It's not more of a, oh, I'm sorry.
Can you please?
Dave Zeminski, I'm a resident at 1463 Lawrence Road. It's not more of a question, but just to expand upon the gentleman who commented about the lack of sidewalks on the soccer field side. I look at it also as a pedestrian safety concern. As it stands right now, absent that asphalt path being cleared, mainly during snowstorms, ice storms, I don't believe that school district has an obligation to clear it as it does a sidewalk. And that eliminates that whole pedestrian egress on that side, as well as only gives the students, parents, whoever, two options, crossing the roadway, hopefully in the crosswalk up at the main entrance, and walking on the residential side, or walking on the berm of Lawrence Road in the opposite way of traffic, which, and that would happen, would usually be at the worst time the roadways would be at a certain condition, icy, snow-covered, what have you. I just think it's a good gesture on the school district's part, or whoever's part it would be, not to seek divergence and to consider the safety aspect alone, as well as how the residents in the community around them feel when they're obligated to do something and the school district does not have to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side? Anybody on this side here? I'd like to...
I'm Michelle Pearson, I'm at 1380 Harrington, right on the cul-de-sac. The concern is about the service road. Now, the gate's gonna be locked at Virginia, right?
Correct.
Right, so traffic would, so for deliveries, it's gonna come up the back driveway?
Correct.
And go down the road?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any kind of regulation on noise? Like, how late can the teams be out there playing?
There is, we do have a noise ordinance on board.
And what are the hours?
Do you remember answer? Kelly, Kelly?
Sure, I mean, specific to recreational noise, it would be a police matter and not something of code enforcement like you would have for construction noise. So I think that the noise ordinance for the police, and you'd really wanna check with them, is approximately 10:00 PM. And it's, there's a certain decibel level that they would have to meet in order to kind of shut it down. But, I mean, certainly, I'm sure that the police would respond if you were having an issue.
The idea is that the fields are gonna be there, and the teams are gonna be out there with the floodlights on, just like last week, they had that.
Maybe to allay your concern, the field out front where the school is currently, yet, that field will be used similar to the field in the front, like mainly by the school district's teams, but there's no lights, we're not putting football lights or anything like that.
So at dusk, everybody should be gone?
It should be gone.
Okay, because they had the Halloween party the other night, and they had a big floodlight and noise and...
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Even though it was over at 7:30?
So there's no lights for the field going?
Then I had a question for you. The cafeteria, how many does it seat?
We're sizing it for, actually, for the district for one grade, so the largest grade is 108 people.
So how many shifts, lunch shifts?
One per grade, so five.
There's gonna be five?
That's how it runs now.
Okay, because I see kids out there at 10:30 on recess.
Well, and again, there's half-day kindergarten, so there's kindergarten recess when they're not eating lunch at the school.
Other than that, it looks very nice. It does, it looks beautiful.
Thank you. Anybody else over on this side? Sir?
John Brower, 1446 Virginia Avenue. I couldn't see where you were pointing, and a couple things, I'm a little cloudy as to exact location for the staging area and the transformer.
The transformer, the Pico transformer that we were talking about would be out here close to Lawrence Road. I think you're on Virginia down here? Right. Construction staging is gonna happen, you know, in between the building wings down here, and then back where the existing service drive is now. So, but from an elevation standpoint, that would be down, you know, at the elevation of the existing soccer field, down the hill.
One more, I just also wanted to confirm that the fire gate that will restrict through traffic off of Virginia Avenue after the project is completed would also be kept closed, so there would not be access during the construction and demolition?
Yeah, correct, that's the plan, we're not, this won't be opened up until through traffic.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Nancy Ring, I live at 1437 Virginia Avenue. So in essence, I'm right on the very corner here. I border the school property, I have a fence that lines, you know, separates my property from the school. Will there be any change to that fence that you foresee? And I see a lot of plantings down here. Is that just trees that they're planning on adding in that location? Because I live, like, literally right at that very end of the street where John Joan lived, we're right at the very end. So if you could extrapolate on this?
Yeah, so there's no plan to change any fencing along here. These are additional plants that will go in for the buffer requirement that the township has. So there's evergreen trees, deciduous trees, and some flowering trees in here.
So that'll, in essence, be right, like, on the other side of my fence, but as a buffer?
Right, yep, that's what it's for.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anybody else on this side here? The school board president.
I'm Larry Feinberg, I'm the school board president, I live at 2023 Olcott Avenue. I wanna thank the residents for coming out this evening and encourage them to stay engaged throughout this two-and-a-half-year process. You know, we know that it's not gonna be a walk in the park. We'll do everything we can to try and make it as smooth and painless as possible, but, you know, that please don't hesitate, if you have any concerns whatsoever, reach out to the superintendent's office, and we'll try and do whatever we can. I'd also like to thank all of you for your attention to detail. We count on it, and for going over this stuff with a fine-tooth comb, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One more.
Joe Martin, also in the school board, Sackenborough Road. Just to clarify that this versus that, for the neighbors in particular, the longer something's going on, the more things can go wrong. And so we had made the decision that instead of renovating the old school, which is obsolete anyway, that building a new school on, basically, with all due respect, Anza Greenfield, will be about a year and a half to two years' construction. So no matter how we look at it, if we renovate the existing school, it'd be closer to your house anyway, but the idea, we'd have to do it during the summers and do this and do that, and there's lots of things that go wrong. So we just found the opportunity, there's enough space in front to pump a new school, not bother the kids, keep the education going, and basically build it and be done in roughly two years.
Thank you.
There are some very old trees on the property. I don't know if those trees can be there. I know, I asked, is there any way to kind of build around? There's a huge oak tree that's probably 80, 100 years old there. Did you guys look at that?
We've tried, yes, we have looked at that, and unfortunately, some of the grading transitions in there are...
Nothing can be saved there?
I know the big oaks that you're talking about across the back.
Anybody else over here? Thank you.
Since Mr. Martin brought it, or Dr. Martin brought it up, Lynn, what's the construction period for this project?
You know, it's all dependent on being authorized by the board, but the plan is that we would go out to bid in the spring of this, of 2019. So March, at the time, February, March, with the thought we'd start construction at the end of the school year, so in June. And the goal is to get a lot of the grading done on the lower level, all those phases. And I have to say, I absolutely agree with everything you said. We've had those discussions, that there are a lot more details on phasing required on these plans. But the thought is, we'd get the temporary utilities hooked up, keep the school in operation. We would do some of the underground basins and start the foundations down there that summer, and then we would work through the school year. And hopefully, finish the new school at the lower level in the spring of 2021, and then that would allow us, as soon as school ended, to go up and start demoing and prepare the parking area, and then we follow with the field.
So two years, three months, roughly, or two years, four months?
It would be, roughly, yes.
21, September 21, you hope to move into the new school?
It'd be June to September 21. We would open the new school for that year.
Doesn't do us any good if the school ready in December.
That's right, that's right.
Anybody else have any questions, or? Thank you. This is just a preliminary hearing.
You're scheduled to the zoning board next Thursday, correct?
Correct.
And hopefully, they'll have an answer for you in a short amount of time. Give you a little time to clean up the plans a little bit, come back to us. I know you said preliminary final in your presentation. I think our township engineer reviewed it as a preliminary plan, so I think it's a little premature at this point. Any type of approval, subject to hearing what the zoning board has to say, okay?
Understood, okay.
Do you want to give them direction?
When do you go to the zoning board?
Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Yeah.
And then you'll come back before us?
Do we, as a group, have thought about that sidewalk?
Boy, I do.
Give them direction?
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Yeah, I think we need to decide.
It's just a couple lines on the drawing, right?
Yeah, just that it's... I think there's a strong feeling that...
I think the sidewalk should be there. I think the sidewalk needs to be, even if you still have the other walkway, that sidewalk needs to go down there. It's benefit of the community, it's a benefit of everybody. I think you ought to extend that curving sidewalk and do it.
You're talking about down at the, at the road elevation?
Yes, sir. I really am very, very strongly in favor of that, and I'm really, would be, I would really recommend to the zoning board, although I don't have any right to tell them what to do, that they understand that I think that the planning commission would, would like them not to grant that variance.
That would be, that would be a waiver.
Waiver. I mean, that, that waiver, excuse me.
That would be the, that would be the commissioner's.
I misspoke. I apologize. I think, I think we're all in agreement. It should be all concreted down, you know, paved all the way down. Yes, ma'am. Sure. Come on up.
Hi, Shannon Ragazzoni, 1465 Lawrence Road. Number one, when the kids are outside playing, I have to tell you, it's the sweetest sound, so be assured when you hear them, you'll love it. Um, number two, in terms of people parking on Lawrence Road to use the soccer fields, it is so dangerous. I can't tell you how many times you watch these people loading on Lawrence Road. It's so scary. Um, I think you should really take that into consideration as well. And then the only other thing is if, if we as neighbors in the row homes could just see like exactly where the school's gonna fall in conjunction to where we live, that would be helpful. Oh, and rats. We're gonna have an issue with rats. I'm telling you, we, we've, we've gotten through the Y, we've gotten through the new, um, storage facility. We've gotten through that man who bought that big ware, uh, abandoned building. I mean, so I can only imagine what we're gonna see now, so. I don't know what can be done, but it is brutal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just. Yeah, me too.
Good seeing you, buddy.
Feel that that sidewalk curves ought to be there. I think, uh, sidewalk curves ought to be there, and I think it's just a safety.
Seeing you, buddy.
Thank you very much. You guys have built your own schools.
You're gonna really reach out to the directly to the community. I think that's gonna be.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We could stay. Kelly, what's your class move of the year? Oh, okay. You can tell everybody.
How are you? Hi, guys. It's awfully quiet in here now.
Absolutely.
Um.
Get a dress, please.
Oh.
Get a dress, please.
Uh, Kelly Kirk, zoning officer, community planner. Um, so, uh, as everyone is aware, all of our departments are now in this building. We're all together in one place. Um, so that leaves us with a couple of facilities floating around that we are no longer in need of because we serviced everybody in one spot. Um, one of those being 599 Glendale Road, uh, the previous site of the recreation offices. Because it is institutional, um, that does relate it to the planning commission to kind of figure out what we want to do zoning wise, as it doesn't seem to be going to be used further, uh, institutionally. Um, so we were looking for a recommendation for what it should be rezoned as. And I, I think pretty reasonably obviously, it's surrounded, um, by residential, um, R4 low to medium density. And because the property was, um, obtained by a grant, um, from the state, we are required to retain some of that space as, um, as recreational open space, um, which is currently, um, Glendale Park slash Merry Place. And then in the rear portion here, uh, Steel Field, and then Hilltop over to the side. Um, so we were thinking, uh, to create an access to the recreational open space and, um, make the front portion off of Glendale Road available for, um, to build some houses, um, in the R4 district.
Is that open space now?
Um, the, it is, uh, all open space in back. I mean, there's a, it's a lot of, um, there's, I think, some steep slope. There's some, little bit of floodplain issues. But, you know, to, and but it's nice, you know, like nature trail-esque area, um, and, uh, it needs to be kept, uh, as recreational for that grant.
Who would maintain that?
Uh, the township. It would remain, uh, township property. Uh, so this is just a sketch. We're not making any motions tonight, um, but does anybody have any comments or questions or?
Is the township's intent to subdivide that themselves?
It is. Uh, and as a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Faulkner is going to be discussing the subdivision portion of the project after we're finished. Everybody else? Good? Wonderful. Uh, we will be discussing this, uh, as a preliminary find, or, well, uh, as the first, um, discussion of the ordinance, which, uh, you do have in your packets, um, if anybody has any questions about the ordinance itself. But we will still be required to do a public hearing, um, and because it's an ordinance, two readings, um, in front of the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, it's my understanding, I think all the commissioners are, have been in favor of this.
They, yeah, that's pretty much, I mean, it's, um, it's, uh, a pretty easy, uh, situation. It's not, there's no other zoning districts other than the recreational open space and R4, um, and spot zoning is not something that you can or want to do. So it's, uh, yeah, pretty, pretty easy.
What's the, what's the determination of how much of the open space and how deep, essentially how deep the new R4 is proposed? Is it a percentage?
There had been, um, some discussions, uh, regarding the grant that we, we received in the late eighties, early nineties about how much, um, they were requiring us to retain, um, as well as what makes sense with a lot, with a lot sizes surrounding it. The lot sizes, um, in that area are actually much, much larger than a usual R4 zoning district, um, which is a minimum 6,000 square feet. Uh, these are run, well, Chuck will go into that further, but about nine to 12,000 square feet, uh, per lot?
There's nine and 16.
Nine and 16. Um, so, uh, so that's, you know, kind of what we decided to do since the other lots were so deep.
Joe has a question.
Yes.
What, if you look at the, where R4 is?
Hmm?
What's to say that the rest of them wouldn't take the other ones, the other two sides of it and make it R4?
I'm sorry, I'm not following. Other two sides of?
Alongside of R4, where you've got the R4 there, the ROSs is.
Yeah.
We own the ground over there?
Yeah, we, we, we own it now. Um, we're just slicing up a piece of it.
They can't.
We're keeping the rest of it.
Now, we're gonna keep the other two sides?
Yes.
As ROS?
Yes.
Hmm? Yep, yeah, no, none of this is changing.
That's Merry Place.
It'll never, it'll never go to R4?
Yeah.
No, well, we, because, well, especially because, um, of the agreement with the grant that we had to purchase the property, they're not gonna let us do it, and we don't really want to, I don't think.
Okay.
Um, I mean, like I said, it's not really ideal to be, to build on anyway, um, and, you know, and it's, you know, a nice nature, um, you know, kind of natural area, which is nice.
Landscape, like trees and stuff?
There's, I mean, there's all kinds of, there's, there's a creek that runs back there, um, some trees. I think there's a, mm, we'll say a man-made trail.
Kids sled on it, right?
Yeah.
It's good, it's a good sledding hill back there.
Um, so, yeah, um, do you want to, uh? I think they're more interested in yours, so.
All right. I believe all you guys have this sketch plan in front of you, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just run through a little bit of this. Um, this went through back and forth with the commissioners quite some, some time and everything as to what made sense to do here. I don't think there was any, I think there was pretty much a consensus it's gonna go to R4. It's a matter of how many lots and what, what size they wanted to do and all that. And, uh, I think the board was leaning pretty much towards three lots here. So that's what we're showing, okay? Two lots and 9,000 square feet. Third lot's obviously bigger, okay? All of them front have access off of Glendale Road, obviously, and there's a little 10-foot, um, access strip on the, uh, on the, on the south side there. And that, that's a requirement of DCNR. DCNR is who the grant was obtained from originally to buy this property. So there are some stipulations that we still have to abide by there, okay? So that's the reason for the 10-foot, um, piece of strip in there, or a little access strip, and then obviously on the other side is, um, Bon Air, which is an open road there. Okay, so again, there, you know, the, the existing building can come down, some, it would be left up to the, uh, developer to, to subdivide and everything, but it, you know, it's, you got a question?
I thought Kelly said that the township is gonna subdivide it.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is, it is township. I'm sorry.
The township's gonna do the three lot subdivision, okay?
I'm sorry. Yep.
There's gonna be three lots.
Would there be a path in that, that 10-foot strip that would allow you to walk back there?
You could, you could really get up to that area easier by working, walking up that unopened road, Bon Air.
Okay.
It's, it's a little less, it's a little less steep in, in through there, and, and it's probably used right now as, as, as a path. But, you know, like I said, DCNR wanted something on the other side also.
Good. Are there steep slopes in that one property?
There are steep slopes throughout that whole property, yeah. I mean, it looks like everybody, uh, except for lot two there, there might be, you know, certainly lots three and, and four have it. And then obviously the bigger lot.
Would that make it harder to develop that lot three or lot four?
Lot four, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Would that make it harder to develop that lot four? I guess you'd have to push the house up towards the front?
It would make it a little more difficult, absolutely.
Well, those lots are basically 50% larger than they have to be.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Yeah, I don't see this as an issue.
Um, a couple, a couple of things I would suggest. Maybe, y- if you look at the lots, lots three, two and three are 60-foot wide at the building line? But lot four is 84 feet wide. So assuming the township subsidizes property and sells it to one developer, my guess is it'd be nice for him to build three uniform houses on there, but he can't do that because, well, he couldn't do, he, he'd have more room on lot four than he would have on one and two, or two and three.
Yep.
Does it make any sense to make lots two and three a little wider and, and shorten up lot four, just so you have uniformity width at the building setback line?
Um, we could certainly do that. Um, I think there was some discussion about how these were going to be packaged, whether they were gonna sell them individually or sell them as one.
I, I don't know how you could sell them individually because if I bought lot two and you bought lot three, I can't tear down half that building and build my building until you do your, I mean, it doesn't make sense to sell, split them up that way.
Well, only, it only makes sense if you demo the building.
Oh, if the township demoed the building. Okay, is that the intent?
Um, n- not right now. Not right now. Let's put it that way.
The, the other thing I was thinking is that 10-foot wide strip, it might make sense to make that maybe 15 feet wide or a little wider so that in the future, if you ever decide, or township ever decides to, they want to put a paved, walking path up there, they have room on either side of the path to do some grading, which is gonna be required.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, the, the minimum 10-foot was, was a requirement at DCNR. It can go a little wa, a little, uh, wider if necessary.
We, um, do we need a variance? Because we're creating a lot that doesn't have, uh, the correct lot frontage, street frontage?
Um, we, we may. Yeah, we may. But. Yeah, we may, we may need that, yeah.
If we're, if we have to go for a variance for street frontage, we might as well throw in a, get a variance for steep slope construction and save the developer some time and effort. It would make the lots more marketable.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly look at that. Um, I, I think the intent was to try to make it as simplistic as possible, you know, without getting too, too involved in getting variances and all that prior to selling it, but, um, I see your point.
Makes a big difference.
Is it possible to pull out from lot two into Bon Air?
Five and 65, it doesn't sense.
It exits, could that, could the house be built in that so it could exit out into Bon Air? Back coming out here?
Yeah.
No, there's a, there's a stream right there.
A stream, okay.
So, and it, you know.
I'm just wondering about, you know, backing out into that road is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It'd be rough.
It's backing out in that area, but you, you wouldn't want to do it.
Right.
Glendale's a PennDOT highway, isn't it?
It's a state highway.
Okay, so whoever develops those lots is gonna have to get a PennDOT permit?
Okay.
For their driveways, and PennDOT frowns on people backing out into their streets. Don't be like a rooster tail turnaround.
Each one would have to be that way. They'd have enough space to be able to.
Is there, I'm sorry.
You'd have to have enough space to make that.
Is there sewer and water in Glendale?
There's one EDU here for the existing property. The township is pursue, pursuing the other.
But there is physical sewer line in the street.
Physical sewer line, yes.
Can you walk us through the floodplain a little bit, since 100-year floods don't seem to only happen every 100 years anymore?
Chuck, can you make them all 65?
Well, let me, let me address Jesse's comment. If, if you ask the RHM, they don't care because RHM is across the street and they get flooded out all the time. But this is, this is the 100-year floodplain here, and, and, and to be honest, that's about right. That's based on visual too, because every time that happens, you can go down there and it's just about right there at the edge of the driveway. So that's a pretty accurate representation. And obviously the bu, we moved the building envelope past that, so, you know, but, yeah, that would have to be taken into consideration too with how you're, how you're building it.
By the builder would might, they would, but they would have this information at their disposal and that it's all public and, right?
Hmm.
Risk, I guess.
I'm sorry, Joe, what were you saying?
Can't you make them all 65?
Sixty-three and a, sixty-three something.
Sixty-three foot.
You can make them all equal if that's what, is that what you guys are, uh, are leaning towards?
Makes more sense.
Yes, but then that lot four wouldn't be.
That lot four, yeah.
That's gonna be a problem for building a lot four.
I mean, you're gonna have steep slopes on lot four.
Really tough. I'd leave it the way it is. Instead of steep slopes.
And of course, if you want to.
I might say make lot four 65 feet wide, so you get the extra five feet that Angelo suggested, because I think that's a really sharp, smart move.
You're gonna need that width to make that move.
And that, that'll work.
Make the access road 15, is that what you're?
Well, make the public access 15 feet. As, as Angelo pointed out, if you do something new and different down the road, you'll have some room for grading.
Chuck, is, is that floodplain an approximate floodplain, or is that a calculated floodplain? Do you know?
No, that's, that's calculated.
It's based on elevation?
Yeah.
And the topo is a good topo?
Topo's a good topo. We actually took some shots out there.
Okay.
So you guys wanna make lot four 65 and add, and make that, um, access 15 foot instead of 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. Agree? Let's do it that way.
All right. Again, like Kelly said, it's only a sketch plan. The zoning changes gotta come first, obviously, and then, and we can go through. So we can, we can tweak this a little bit, see what the, how the board feels about things, and then.
Okay. Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have minutes to approve?
You're gonna do minutes. I wasn't here.
I wasn't here either.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Abstained.
Yeah.
Fully abstained. We have two abstentions because they weren't here the last meeting. They weren't here. Make a motion to adjourn unless we have something else. Anybody have anything else?